Peter Fox.
Vance Garwood.
Clint Tyner.
Dan Coulson.
Thank you. Let's move on then to the committee and staff report and the document report. Anything there?
Do want to mention a couple of things that are not on our agenda today. On our draft agenda, we did have another conditional use case, which I'm sure you all have noticed is not featured here today. Reason for that is that staff was able to work out with the applicant a way to meet their requirements without needing to go through the conditional use process. So it was taken off the agenda. They withdrew their application. At your last meeting, you continued the lot split that you all may remember or that accessory structure. According to the applicant, there's still no update and he's not sure if there will be. So, yeah. It might show back up when they have anything to present and wish to continue their case, but as of now, they've decided to put it on ice, so to speak.
Okay. Anything else? No? Well, let's move on then. Gary, you want to make a motion for us?
Well, Mr. Chairperson, you need to go over the minutes, get approval for the minutes.
That's right, we do. Sorry about that. I skipped over that. We need to get, we need approval for the June 17th, 2025 meeting from the Andover Planning Commission. Someone would make that motion.
Well, I, Gary Israel, will make a motion to accept the minutes from the June 17th, 2025 Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals as presented.
Thank you, Gary. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right. So did that out of order. Sorry about that. So we got the minutes done and the staff report done. We're ready to move on now. You want to give, make a motion, Gary, for us to?
I don't have it on there. I just have agenda item 5.1. Okay. Well, I, Gary Israel, make a motion to adjourn the planning commission and convene the Board of Zoning Appeals.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. We have a motion, a second by Peter. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Sorry, Gary, you're just one, the one that always does it. So that's why I asked you.
No, that's okay. I'm happy to do that.
Sure. We'd like to welcome everyone and lay out a few ground rules which will apply to each of our public hearings tonight. It's important that you present any facts or views you have as evidence so that an informed recommendation can be made by the planning commission to the governing body for their final decision. By state statute, the governing body does not have to hold an additional public hearing on this matter, although they may listen to whomever they wish. You will be asked if there is any new information which was not heard at these hearings. It's to everyone's advantage if you present all the necessary information at these hearings. For each case, the city's zoning administrator provides the commission with background information. I will call upon the applicant. Public comments will be heard following the applicant. Once all have been heard, the applicant will have a final, a final opportunity for comments. The planning commission will close the hearings to public comment and then will consider the 14 factors on which to base their recommendation. During this time, the commission may direct questions to the applicant, the public and/or city staff. You should be aware that the planning commission can recommend that the site be plotted or replotted if necessary, and that a site plan may be required for approval. You should be aware that any uses permitted outright in a district by the regulations can receive a zoning permit. Furthermore, if the applicant chooses to describe various features of their development plans, the city can only enforce those provisions which are covered in zoning and other city codes. Anyone wishing to speak must be recognized by the chairperson and give their name and address. Please use the podium and speak clearly so that your comments can be recorded for inclusion into our minutes. Official notices for these hearings were published on the city of Andover municipal website on June 21st, 2025. The notices were mailed to the applicant and all real property owners of record in the area of notification on June 20, 2025. Record shows that at least 20 days have elapsed between the publication and mailing dates and the hearing date. Unless there is evidence to the contrary from anyone present, I'll declare that the proper notification has been given. Although we do not encourage such communications, I will ask the commission if any of them have received any ex parte written or verbal or written communications prior to these hearings which they would like to share.
None.
No.
I'll now call on agenda item 5.1, which is public hearing on case BZA-CU-25-0001. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'll ask the commission members if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they or a relative own property in the area of notification or have any conflicts of interest.
No.
None.
I now call on the city zoning administrator to provide us with a report on this case.
Mr. Chairperson and members of the planning commission, this is a conditional use case to permit some outdoor patio restaurant seating for the incoming Freddy's Restaurant. Over there at 646 East Cloud. This that I have before you projected on the screen is actually from the approved site plan. That was approved back on July 1st. And you can see up to the north there around there, number four, I believe, is where the patio seating will be located. This property is zoned B3 and under the B3 district, outdoor patio seating as an accessory use is an improved conditional use as long as it will not encroach into the public right of way. This is pretty far from the public right of way. So staff feels that this is very much within the acceptable range for this property and space was already kind of made when this was laid out for that to be done.
Any questions of staff?
What's on the south side?
Currently, nothing.
Isn't that a dental office on the south side?
It, in the future, there will be one going in. As of now, this retail space does not have much in it.
Any other questions? I now call upon the applicant to make his or her presentation on the request and any response to the zoning administrator report. If you'd want to come up and state your name and address, if you would.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Kenneth Soldana.
And I'm Erica Nye.
646.
East Cloud Avenue.
Avenue. So currently, right now, we're looking at with the patio area to have about 48 total seats, 40 at the interior and then eight at the exterior. Two concrete patio tables with umbrellas on them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to the applicants?
Will there be a fence or anything around the seating area like at most other Freddy's?
Yeah, we typically do like a red railing around the patio area just to keep people in from getting out into the drive through any parking area.
It will be on two sides, running with the building and then perpendicular. So it'll be, the side that it's open on will be facing the, the parking stall so customers can get in and out on that side.
To the west, I guess would be.
It'd be to the side.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? No, I don't have any. Seems pretty straightforward. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Any members of the public that would like to speak on this case? Any written communication been received?
No, sir.
Hearing no further public comment, I hereby close the public portion of the hearing. There will be no further public comments unless the board wishes to ask questions to clarify information. The board will now deliberate the request to determine whether the evidence presented supports the conclusions of the required findings of fact. Board now will consider the criteria provided for evaluation.
I can read those if you want.
Okay.
Does the evidence support the conclusion that, one, the proposed conditional use complies with all applicable regulations, including lot size requirements, bulk regulations, use limitations, and performance standards, unless a concurrent application is in process for a variance? Staff's answer is yes.
Concur.
Number two, the proposed conditional use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood. Staff anticipates no such negative effects.
Concur.
Concur.
Number three, the location and size of the conditional use and nature and intensity of the operation involved, inner, conducted in connection with it, and the location of the site with respect to street, streets giving access to it, are such that the conditional use will not dominate the immediate neighborhood so as to prevent development and use of the neighborhood property in accordance with the applicable zoning district regulations.
Concur.
In determining whether the conditional use will so dominate the immediate neighborhood, consideration shall be given to, A, the location, nature, size, and height of the building, structures, walls, and fences on the site, and B, the nature and extent of the landscaping and screening on the site. Staff, the requested conditional use will not dominate the immediate neighborhood or prevent development of the surrounding area.
Concur.
Concur.
Number four, off-street parking and loading areas will be provided, provided in accordance with the standards set forth in Article 5 of these regulations. Such areas will be screened from adjoining residential uses so as to protect such residential uses from injurious effects. Staff, yes.
Concur.
Concur.
Number five, adequate utility drainage and other such necessary facilities have been installed or will be provided by plating, dedications, and/or guarantees. Staff, yes. All are currently in place.
Concur.
And number six, adequate access roads, entrance and exit drives and/or access control is available or will be provided by plating, dedications, and/or guarantees, and shall be so designed to prevent traffic hazards and to minimize traffic congestion in public streets and roads. Staff, yes.
Concur.
Concur.
Thank you, Peter. Is there a motion to either approve, modify and approve, disapprove, or table a discussion?
Mr. Chairperson, I have one other question for the applicant. Sorry, I didn't think of it. The seating, is it going to be bolted down? That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Yeah. Thank you.
One of them, one of them is ADA compliant, so it does cantilever over and that's the one that's more likely to follow. So yes, they all get bolted down and that's one of the big reasons so they don't tip over.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Well, then, having considered the evidence at the hearing and determined that the findings of fact have been found to exist that support all six conditions set out in subsection 11-107C of the zoning regulations, I, Gary Israel, move that the chairperson be authorized to sign a resolution granting the conditional use for case number BZA-CU-25-0001 as requested.
Thank you, Gary. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. The resolution will be prepared and made available to the applicant as soon as reasonably possible, no later than 45 days from the day of his hearing. If anyone's agreed by this decision, a further appeal can be made to the district court to determine its reasonableness within 30 days after the resolution is signed and filed with the zoning administrator. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I now call agenda item 5.2, which is a public hearing on case number BZA-V25-0009. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'll ask the commission members if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they or a relative own property in the area of notification or have conflicts of interest. Thank you. I now call on the city zoning administrator to provide us with a report on this case.
This case is an application for a variance for the Jump Start at the corner of West 21st and North Andover Road. Approximately a one acre lot, and they have this existing sign that you see here. The applicant, in this case, wishes to install a pole sign that is taller than what would be normally allowable in the district, which is 20 feet. They would like 25, five foot variance in height. Pole signs are allowed outright in this district, so a 20-foot pole sign would probably go to the Site Planner Review Committee, but it wouldn't come to you all. Staff does feel that the five additional feet doesn't seem to be supported by that much that sets this property apart from the others around it. You know, it's not really like there's any topographic features that make it hard to see the sign, especially if it were 20 feet tall. Obviously, the existing one is not. And we can't really find a, you know, a large development nearby that would make it, you know, cause sightlines on Andover Road or on 21st to make it hard to see this sign. So unfortunately, we don't feel that there's a proved need for the variance that's strong enough to go for it.
Thank you.
How large is the one across the street at Casey's?
Yeah.
Don't have that off the top of my head, do you know?
It's a monument height sign, less than 10 feet.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I'm sorry.
What do they have now, again? That's a monument type sign?
We'd consider that.
And, yes, we would consider that. Or that is what they have now.
That is the existing.
Yeah. And a monument's considered under 10 feet?
I don't think there's necessarily a height maximum.
Monument is under 15 feet high.
I stand corrected.
And that's what's approved? That's what you could put there is a monument sign?
A pole sign is permitted up to 20 feet in height and they're asking for 25.
Any more, more questions of staff? If not, I now call upon the applicant to make his or her presentation on the request and any response to the zoning administrator report. If you'd state your name and address and everything, that'd be great.
Hello, my name is Anders Herpleshammer. I represent Ron Sign Company. We're the agent for Jump Start at 2035 North Anderson Road. So with this, that the pole or the ground sign that was originally there is what was inherited with the building. So it was modified to fit what their logo is, but the, the brand standard for the Jump Starts is, is the 25-foot tall pole sign with the double pole. And the owner's not typically fond of having it at an angle where you find that out on the corner. So he usually straightens them out one way or the other. But the, the advantage of going to 25 feet is the clearance underneath the bottom of the, the sign. Because if it was that, because we did a layout where it was at 20 feet and you have like a couple of feet underneath, like one or two feet underneath, so you have a real, your sign becomes squatty and everything's close to the ground and it's a little bit harder to read where when you push it up a little bit, you have a little bit, a better eye line sight to see it and read it from a distance.
I know there are other Jump Start locations. What are the height on those signs?
So this is probably the, the lowest height I've been to a variance for. I mean, normally when I'm in front of a board for a variance, I'm pushing 50 to 65 feet because we're close to an interstate where obviously we're not anywhere close to a highway here. But even in city limits in Wichita, they usually give up secondary signs based on allocation of street frontage to get an extra five or 10 feet and push it up as high as he can. The idea is to be seen as, from as far away as possible.
Yeah, I guess I meant, in particular, I know there are other Jump Start specific locations in Wichita. How, how tall are those?
25 minimum.
Oh, they're 25.
We, usually everything's at the minimum of 25 unless we can go higher. And then, I mean, there's certain smaller cities that we get around and the surrounding areas that have been, had no problem with 30 or 35 feet. It just kind of, every municipality is different, so it's always trying to see what, what you're comfortable with allowing.
More questions?
I've got several questions. The first one's the staff. Is there any requirement for a height for the underside of the sign, where the 3.29? I mean, they're showing, well, I can't read it from here, what, five something? Is there?
Five feet eight.
Five feet eights. I mean, could it go three feet? Or are we looking at a reason for having that height other than getting up there so you can see through, see traffic, or somebody's not going to bump their head if they walk underneath it?
The sign isn't in a walkway or adjacent to a walkway. There is no minimum clearance required.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Now for the applicant. I, I know in my past experience, when you're doing numbers and things, there are typically standard sizes for, what, eight? Now, these are eight segment numbers. You know, they're the top, the middle, the bottom, and the two sides, but these don't seem to be eight segment numbers.
Not with the advancement in the LED boards. Now with the pixels that they can put in, like you can, the boards we can get have, I think, six different variations of numbers you can put up there. So they're progressing with that, so numbers are, are laid out different now.
Okay. So have you looked at this sign, if you scaled it from 25 feet to 20 feet, how that looks?
I mean, the square footage is the same. It's, it's when you look at it, it looks like it almost sits on the ground. But since it's a standard pole sign, it looks a little awkward when it sits there. Because you usually with a pole sign, you expect to see clearance underneath the bottom of it, whereas it's basically almost on the ground.
Okay, I'm going to get my calculator out here.
Could the digits be a little smaller so you can comply with 20 feet?
That's what I'm trying to figure out right now. What size are they?
30, yeah. They, I, I don't know. I don't remember what the 24-inch digit, 24 would be the next size down.
Okay. So if you scaled it from 25 to 20, you're approximately have four and a half feet underneath the bottom set of numbers. So it's not sitting on the ground. It's still at a pretty good height. I think when I'm sitting in my car, I'm about this height. What am I? I'm under five feet. I'm going to be able to see under the sign and I'll be able to see the bottom numbers. And I know part of the deal is you're competing against Casey's next door. You want bigger numbers so people see your gas prices versus their gas prices. Totally understandable. But I think you could do, you could scale this to 20 feet and be A-OK.
Any other questions, the applicant? Are there other examples of this in town? Where, where, where?
I think the key here is to grant a variance, you have to demonstrate that there's something unique other than just that's what the applicant wants. There are regulations and, and those apply uniformly unless there's something unique that would cause a need for it to be taller. Was there something in the way that blocked its visibility? No, it's on a corner. It's clear lines of sight. Fact of the matter, there are no other signs anywhere near that height in this neighborhood.
And I know today I traveled west on 21st Street. And I mean, you see Jump Start on the top, on the top piece there above the pumps, you see that way off. And I was traveling north on Andover Road and just north of the high school, I could read Jump Start on the building. So it's not like nobody knows what that building is.
No, well, I get your point on that, but at the same time, they, you can see it's Jump Start, but you don't know what the gas prices are. So you might commit to another station just because you can't read what it is from that far away. And you're like, oh, well, I'll go this way because I like Casey's better, but whereas you might have got a better deal going to Jump Start.
I filled up with Casey's this afternoon. I could see the price on their 10-foot monument sign from three blocks away.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm basically saying you could cut the Jump Start logo off the top of that pole sign. And just have the prices of the gas. Or scale the whole thing down a little bit. Oh, I understand. I used to be a marketing and branding and stuff like that.
So it, it's the staff's recommendation that the max height be kept at 20 feet in this case, right?
That's correct. We don't feel that there's an adequately demonstrated need for the variance.
Anybody up here have more questions for the applicant or staff? Thank you. Appreciate it. Sure appreciate you coming. Is any, any, are there any members of the public that would like to speak? Because there's nobody here. Any written communication been received?
No, sir.
No. Any final comments? No. Hearing no further public comment, I hereby close the public portion of the hearing. There will be no further public comment unless the board wishes to ask questions to clarify information. The board will now deliberate the request to determine whether the evidence presented supports the conclusion of the required findings of fact, and the board will now consider the criteria provided for evaluation. I could, I could read these. You want to make the motion, Gary? Somebody, if I read them?
Well, do you want to read those or I can make a motion?
I think we need to go through them now.
Okay.
Does the, does the demonstration, evidence demonstrate that, one, the physical surrounding shape or topography of the property would result in a practical difficulty as distinguished from mere convenience for the owner, lessor, applicant, applicant staff? Subject property is a corner lot on a relatively busy intersection. None of the surrounding development features, structures taller than, are taller than usual. A sign of the normal maximum height would be adequately visible.
Concur.
Granting the variance will result in material detriment or injury to other property or improvements in the neighborhood. Staff, no detriment is expected.
Concur. Concur.
Three, granting the variance will result in inadequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, substantially increased traffic congestion, increased fire risk, or substantially diminished property values in the neighborhood. Staff, no such effect is anticipated. Concur.
Concur.
Four, the request for a variance is not based exclusively on the desire of the owner, lessor, occupant, or staff to make more money out of the property. Staff, the applicant wishes to install a taller than permitted typically, typically committed, permitted pole sign, which would act as advertising for the business. This may indicate a desire to make more money out of the property by increasing visibility to customers. Concur. Specific conditions to be met. One, the requested variance arises from a condition unique to the property in question, which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district, which is not graded by any action of the property owner or the applicant, staff. Subject property is fairly typical for its zoning district, is over four times the minimum area for the B3's district, but it's not uncommon for similar businesses which feature a large parking area. Property does not feature any unique topographic elements which would render the existing monument sign insufficient. Concur. Two, strict application of the provisions of these zoning regulations would, would result in unnecessary hardship for the owner, lessor, or occupant of the land or structures. Staff, no such hardship is expected under current conditions. Concur. Granting the variance will not affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents. Staff, no such adverse effects are anticipated. Concur. Four, the variance, the requested variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. Staff, no such adverse effects are anticipated. Five, the requested variance will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of these zoning regulations. Staff, were it to be approved, the requested variance is unlikely to affect public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare of the city. Concur. Is there a mo, is there now a motion to either approve, modify and approve, disapprove, or table a discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To disapprove. Do we have to have a second on that? You want me to read them? Having considered the evidence at the hearing and determined that the findings of fact have not been found to exist to support all five conditions set out in subsection 11, 106.B2 of the zoning regulations, and KSA 12759E, I, David Foley, move that the chairperson be authorized to sign a resolution not granting the variance for case number BZA-V25-0009.
We have a motion by Dave. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Mister Chairperson, I'd like to make one additional comment. I. I totally believe that you could get by with a twenty foot sign. It's eighty percent of what you're asking right there and on that corner. Your numbers would still be bigger than the ones at Casey's.
A resolution will be prepared and made available to the applicant as soon as reasonably possible, but no later than forty five days from the date of his hearing. If anyone is agreed by this decision, a further appeal can be made to District Court to determine reasonableness within sixty to thirty days. After the resolution is signed and filed with the zoning administrator. Appreciate you coming. Thank you. I know it's not the result you're looking for, but appreciate you coming. All right, well, thanks for coming. All right. All right. I now make a motion to adjourn the Board of Zoning Appeals and reconvene the Planning Commission.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, although if it's in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. So move on to item five point three, which is the capital improvement plan.
Good evening, commissioners. They only let me present one item a year, so this is my turn. I'm very.
You always take the longest. You're like, you're like, it's like church on Sunday morning.
I know.
Oh, I'm just kidding.
I'm very pleased to present tonight the capital improvement plan for twenty twenty six through twenty thirty. This summary is a result of budget workshops that have happened between staff and council. For in April and in June. And state statute says that for a planning and zoning commission. Who has gone to the work of adopting and certifying a comprehensive plan. Also needs to approve the city's C I P plan. And this is really where a good government happens in terms of good community planning. And financial planning where they come together and this document is a living document. Uh, it changes in priorities as we go through the years. Sometimes opportunities become available like grants. And so you might see things shift. Um, but everything that you see programmed in twenty twenty six. Uh, is going to be part of the budget that will be presented at the August twenty six public hearing. And I'm very pleased to say that as a result of. The work that was done on the budget, even with the the number of items that you see in the C I P plan that. We were able to present a budget that is a reduction in the mill levy of point eight two four mils. And so that uh, what is being presented on August twenty six is a budget that. Will levy forty two point nine eight one mils, which is a reduction from last year. Um, I am happy to take any questions and to and to hear your comments on this plan. And I will do my best. To to be a a good provider of answers.
So Jolene, I have a question.
Yes.
Twenty twenty six, the total uh, amount. That looks like it's being budgeted is twenty, a little over twenty and a half million dollars. If prices were to rise on certain things. Is the city gonna try to maintain that twenty and a half million by eliminating or pushing out other items? To twenty twenty seven? Or is the city willing to? You know, raise that budget limit?
So, once the budget is adopted, then we are held to that spending authority. Uh, the only instance in which that spending authority can change. Is if we come back to the governing body and they approve a budget amendment. And that might mean that other conditions have changed. For example, perhaps revenues came in higher than was projected, in which case there would be more availability. Without the need to cut other items, but. Yes, uh, with some limitations in in different funds, there are a lot of. State statutes and laws um, saying, you know, that certain expenditures can only come from certain funds. For example, I can't use funds data dedicated in for bond payments to pay for a new fire truck. So, you know, there are all, there are a lot of rules to protect um, taxpayers in that sense. Um, and that is one of them.
Okay, and let's say that revenues came in higher. Can you start pulling things from twenty twenty seven and doing those in twenty twenty six?
It would require a budget amendment. We would have to have the authority to do that.
I basically knew that. I just wanted that on the record.
Sounds like a trick question.
Well, you know, a lot of times we just approve things, you know, the.
Sure.
The public, if they read this, they, well, you didn't even talk about any of this and. I want people to know that we're, we are discussing the budget, that we are concerned about. Their tax money and where funds are coming from and how they're being spent.
Speaking of which. Self-contained breathing apparatuses.
Still there.
It's still there. Five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yes.
What's the deal with that?
So um, S C B A's or self-contained breathing apparatuses are required to be replaced. Um, is it every five years, I believe?
How many firemen do we have?
This is.
Once the firemen were.
Correct, that allows them to breathe when they're um, when they're suited up and going into a burning building, for example.
Yeah, yeah, just like scuba gear. Diving, you have to replace your tanks every so often. You have to replace your masks because they're deteriorating.
They're very expensive.
Yeah.
And I would add, Mister Foley, to your point, I believe we have right around twenty full-time firefighters, but if you'll recall, we have several part-time and reservists. And they all have to have their own unique um, self-contained breathing apparatus.
Twenty of them.
Twenty full-time and then probably another. Ten part-time and reservist.
So that's twenty divided by, and then there's probably the.
Probably another ten between part-time and reserves.
Does that include the? The whole deal.
Yeah, they have to have their own.
Twenty grand a piece.
It's twenty seven thousand dollars per.
The departments that go woo-woo are very expensive.
All right.
Yeah, guaranteed need of your product every five years.
I just, I'm, I know it has to be done. It's not the.
Yeah, we're not saying it's not.
I mean, it's, you think about it, you divide it by five. That's five thousand five hundred dollars per unit, per firefighter fighter. Are their lives worth that?
Absolutely. Oh, yeah. Just surprising how much they cost.
And and to that point, I mean, we have some several things like that. Their radios are that way, so we have to replace radios. We budget to replace. Two a year, they're five thousand dollars a piece, so that situation does present itself in these departments, several areas.
Just was shocked. I totally support it though.
And we are hoping and we are. It's a really hard time to apply for federal grants. We have been told that our grant application for S C B A looks very good. But to Mister Israel's good points a minute ago, regardless of if we get a grant to come in and pay for them, you have to have the budget authority to pay for them. So we are hopeful to receive a federal grant to help pay for some or all of that. Um, but as everybody applying for federal grants right now, we we're not real sure where that's gonna come out.
Robotic, we get a robotic mower for the golf course? My sister and brother-in-law have a big yard, like a big yard, and they use one for most of their yard. And they, I haven't seen it yet, but they say it's impressive. I'd be curious to watch that work at the golf course.
There's no joy in it.
You have one, Dave?
No, I'm just thinking that I enjoy mowing and there's just no joy in it. Headphones on, it's my time, whatever.
Problem was is when it got to a certain incline, it would shut off.
Yeah.
And it was a safety feature of the mower. So then you had to. Physically mow that part. Because of the incline, so the incline around my swimming pool was. You know, a pretty good incline, so it would die every time on that. And you try to go sideways, so it doesn't do it, but then it's. It's got an incline sideways too, and it just shuts it off.
I have a few questions.
Yeah, go for it.
In uh, June of last year, July of last year, it was first time that I was presented with something like this and. I felt a little uncomfortable. I just, I wasn't a part of the process, yet I'm being asked to. So I compared last year's. Budget for twenty twenty six. To this year's budget, twenty twenty six, and it's, this year's budget is over by three point seven million more. So I'm, I'm just concerned a little bit about how that's gonna be paid for and I wasn't a part of the process, but. Was indeed revenues better? Did we get a grant or what's driving the fact that we're bumping this by three point seven million?
That's an excellent question and I am happy to answer it. Um, I, it would be uh, my guess, uh, without. Digging too close into the numbers, I think I can comfortably say it's most likely the wastewater treatment plan expansion. That um, it's not the wastewater treatment plan expansion.
The numbers are pretty close.
More likely it's just cost of materials and supply.
It might have, there are. Yeah.
Two million.
Two million dollars is that, and so it also another thing that happened is we did have a million dollar grant. That uh, was paid uh, for the lodge. It was a disaster recovery grant from the Kansas Department of Commerce. And what had been budgeted uh, to pay that gap of a million dollars was park improvement funds. And so we were able to add back in uh, some capital projects for the Parks Department.
That's bumped by two hundred and fifty thousand roughly.
I think the restrooms at Corner Stoner one you're talking about, and I think those might be a little bit more than that.
The cornerstone park was moved up a couple of years.
Right, and so that that's part of it is things definitely move up, and you're also right. They check these numbers much closer when they come in the actual annual budget because. As you can see, when we're projecting out there, really what we're doing in twenty seven in the future is we're making sure we don't forget. Hey, people have raised their hand and said this is important.
Street improvements are a million plus dollars more. Street improvements.
Some of that have to do with.
Not that I have a problem with that, I'm just.
Yeah.
I think the key here is that the county sets the mill levy rate for the year based on our budget. That is all of the funds that can come from property taxes. There are other revenue sources.
I saw that, yeah.
Grants and we have reserve funds uh, for street improvements. We may do a five million dollar street project one year and in the next do nothing. So you'll see that fluctuation in the total dollars. But the key is that. Property tax collection.
So I was just concerned about year one. Which is twenty twenty six. Uh, if you look at the other three years in the budget, we actually are spending a little bit less. And I think it's because we're moving stuff in from prior, from future years. But I again, I wasn't, I wasn't involved the entire process. I'm just asking some questions based on what I've seen.
Three point. Two million dollar Founder's Parkway project. That. Skipped a year of funding. From uh, Kansas Department of Transportation Corridor Management Construction Program Grant. So funds are flowing in from K dot. To fund two million dollars of that project, so there, there are all of these sources of funds. That aren't necessarily consistent.
I understand. I'm just asking questions.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
I'm not qualified to say yes or no to any of them. I'm just asking.
Yeah.
I, and I, I think, you know, as I was thinking about this item and how like the statute came to be. You know, I really think that your role in this is, you know, is this good planning for the city? Does it support the comprehensive plan goals? Um, is anything um. You know, that is is proposed here contradictory to the plan in your opinion. And um, you know, it really is truly a living document and as. As things change, as they come in more expensive or other funding opportunities open up that aren't necessarily from the taxpayer. Um, that allows um, different projects to move in and out. It really is, it flows quite dramatically. So excellent questions.
What is the the engine replacement on the fire? Two thousand and seven and then. Is that a vehicle? In engine replacement?
Engine replacement would be a fire engine, yes. I'm not.
Like the whole truck?
Just the, of the whole truck?
No, like I'm trying to.
Just the engine on it.
It's a hundred and forty five thousand dollars for five years.
That's a lease. We're going to try leasing this time.
Cause it's a million dollar vehicle or something.
Yeah, oh, they're more than that, ladder trucks, you know. You could get a lot of breathing apparatuses for that. I just can't get over that.
That's cool. Not that I have anything to say under any authority, but that's interesting.
And in reference to the gentleman doing the work in the I T room back there. I'd be fighting for more than twenty grand in I T expenses.
He's coming out.
Yeah, that's a.
That's a good question. How often does the city replace computers?
I'm happy to answer that. Um, we are on a three-year uh, maintenance schedule. For like your workstations and your your tablets. That's pretty. Uh, uh, when you can afford to do do that, that's good practice in terms of of good. Uh, working equipment.
And what happens to used computers and tablets?
When we can, we resell. When we cannot, we recycle.
Okay.
We have an H V A C expense that's new to the budget?
Yes, you can fill perhaps the variance right now today in our HVAC. It's been pretty finicky as of late.
To put it all in perspective, the system's fifteen years old. That's the planned renewal for H V A C equipment.
Should be. My experience is ten less.
Yeah. Ten years. Everyone thinks you still have twenty years.
In the real estate market, if you have an H V A C that's older than ten years, it's a detriment. And these days, if you have a roof that's older than five years, it's a detriment.
Even a metal roof?
Man, mine's twenty.
What about metal roofs?
Not gonna sell, gonna die there.
Any other questions of staff on this?
Now, if this has been gone over by. Uh, city staff and uh, with city council and your workshops and everything. I mean, you all would have dug into everything much deeper than we would on this board. So I appreciate all the effort that goes into it, having been, having done this in the past, so.
If it's any comfort, we also did have to have some things pushed out instead of in. Um, we were really committed to getting that mill levy to the forty two point nine eight one rate. And so um. The time period is really tight. We get appraisal value on June fifteenth on or before. And then we need to turn that around and workshop with the council members over the next two weeks because. Based on some state legislation that sets when we have to publish our intent to exceed what they have named. have named the revenue neutral rate, it just requires a really short turnaround. And so many frenzied meetings on the second floor of this building mid-June to have a team approach. All the department heads really worked together. There were things, some department heads would say, oh, I could push that off a year, and another might say, no, actually, I don't think you should. I've got something I can push off. So it was a really great experience, very collaborative team approach. I'm really proud of the staff for how they came together during that time.
I, Gary Israel, would make a motion to approve the 2026 to 2030 capital improvement plan as presented this evening.
Thank you, Gary. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Gary and second by Peter. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. I appreciate all the effort that goes into this. I can't imagine trying to forecast this out five years with this community growing as fast as Andover is in the streets and, I mean, Kellogg Expansion and Prairie Creek and Dorktown, and I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure there's a lot of people involved, but yeah, appreciate that. All good on the capital improvement plan? Good? All right. Any member items?
Just one thing. You know, when we worked on the comprehensive plan, you know, people said, well, we don't have enough restaurants, you know? Well, we've got Livingston's, Victory Bar, Point Nine, now they're working on Freddy's and.
Social Tap?
Yep, Social Tap and also Chipotle. So, I mean, man, in just a short period of time, we've added quite a few places for people to go and to gather. So I think that's pretty amazing.
Did you say you want a Golden Corral?
Golden Corral.
Is, is there any talk from anybody, and you can't share details, but northwest or northeast corner of 21st Street, Andover Road, is there any potential there or not? Probably can't say, but northeast or northwest corner of.
Where the old.
Yeah, where the old, where they tore down Butler County Building?
There is some energy building in that area.
Georgie Boy. What's that?
Georgie Boy.
Right. Right now, what we're hearing from, it's the franchisees who really drive the retail and restaurant world. What we're hearing from franchisees is the construction costs are so high, they're having trouble justifying building new locations. Existing locations are being absorbed at a rate we haven't seen in many years, but new locations are a tough sell.
Cross the coast of money to get one.
Yes.
Yeah. Money's expensive.
I thought there was some talk about a second grocery store.
Several grocery providers have been approached and not have come to the table yet.
I assume because of the similar problems?
Exactly.
You know, I've said this before, but, you know, we live near 29th, at 29th and Andover Road, and if we were to time it, it's probably as quick to go to the Target, almost the Target at Greenwich, as it is down to Kellogg, you know, Andover Road to the Dillons there. I mean, we don't go there too much because our kids are in school and, you know, they're in school in East Wichita, but it'd be great to have something where the North Side could, an Aldi or something. I know that's been discussed over the years, I think, a couple of times, maybe.
It'd be like a Hy-Vee.
Hy-Vee? Yeah.
That would be.
Do they come this far north?
No.
South.
South.
How about a Piggly Wiggly?
They're primarily the south, aren't they? Like Texas, Hy-Vee.
Buggies.
You're thinking of HIB.
Okay.
HEB.
There we go.
Yeah, Buggies. I saw, is Point Nine open today? I saw this, it says now open. Or is it a?
I saw that when I drove by.
Is it a joke?
I need to call them. They had a soft opening event to test out their systems and their staff over the weekend.
Where was this? Point Nine on the trail there? The new restaurant? Yeah, we, I drove by today, tonight, and there were a lot of people there, and it said, signs out on the street, like, in the yard, now open.
Looks really cool.
Yeah, I'm sure it's going to be great. I just didn't realize they were, maybe they're not supposed to be open, I don't know, but.
Who needs licenses?
We're excited about it.
Yeah.
I don't know, there was, there are quite a few, I believe there were 15 cars there?
Yeah, it's open now.
Okay.
They still need to finish up some of the building.
Okay.
Putting some of the top caps on the roof and stuff like that, so.
Anything else? Are there any of those old purple lights left that Evergy needs to replace from like two or three years ago? It seems like I've seen them, and I just keep thinking, surely that's not the case.
Recurring problem.
So they keep putting up the purple ones, or are they just not replacing the ones that were there?
It's a failure in the picture.
Oh.
They've replaced.
Oh.
China.
My recollection was that they were the, they were a purple color from the start, and Evergy needed to go back around and fix those, but they were actually, I see. I've had a TV do that.
They were white from the beginning. Made a dozen excuses for why they turned.
It's pretty common. Pretty common. Well, any more member items? No?
I, Gary Israel, make a motion to adjourn the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you, Gary. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.